Welcome to the first of our political candidate forums in advance of the November 8th general election. This forum, a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates today are running for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners at Large Group Two. I'm Tom Flanagan from WFSU Public Media. I am joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We're going to be questioning the candidates on various topics. Let's get that quick overview of the ground rules and then we'll meet those candidates.
The candidates for Leon County Commissioner at Large Group Two, sitting left to right, are Josh Johnson and incumbent Nick Maddox. A reminder for those who are watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. Here's how the forums are going to work. We will rotate which candidate gets to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask the candidates to keep your answers brief. We will give you a timeframe with each question and we will keep time and when we hit that time, you will hear this. Come to a stop, we're going to move on. In the middle of the forum, we will have a lightning round where we ask you to keep your answers to just one sentence. At the end of the forum, you'll have 60 seconds to make the case directly to voters and share your website or any other important information. Danielle?
If you're watching on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments and we'll get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited. You can improve your chances of questions getting asked if you keep it brief and polite and make the question applicable to all candidates. Candidates, do you have any questions before we begin?
No, good, thank you.
Then let's jump in with the first question.
You get first.
And that would be with me. So, candidates, and we'll start with Nick Maddox. What makes you the right candidate in this race? You have 45 seconds.
Thank you. So, very clearly, my name is Nick Maddox. I am your county commissioner at large and running for reelection. I think what makes me right for the race is my past proven leadership as well as reliability when it comes to this community. I've worked on things for everything from helping our public housing redeveloped to looking at how we bring Amazon in and also economic development there and crime issues as well. I think what we need moving forward is experience that knows how to work collaboratively with the organization as well as the community in moving us forward. So, I have done that in the past and I will continue to do that and I look forward to continue to serve you as your county commissioner at large.
Thank you. Josh Johnson, what makes you the right candidate in this race?
Thank you so much. I'm Josh Johnson. As a local educator, I think that the community is seeking something new. As we deal with an affordable housing crisis that has exacerbated over the last 12 years, high crime rates, the poorest zip code in the state of Florida in 32304, I think that people are tired. And what I hear knocking door after door after door is it's time for new leadership. And I think that I have proven to be that new leadership. I think that this campaign has been people-driven and it will continue to be people-focused. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up question. Josh Johnson, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you.
What is your opponent's biggest liability in this race?
Well, the elephant's in the room and I think that the biggest liability is the erosion of public trust. After headline-making scandal, after headline-making scandal, from unauthorized endorsements to those of the personal sort, I think that moving forward, Leon County needs a commissioner that not only they can trust, but that they can trust will do a good job. I think that I have been right on the issues and I do think that I am right on the personal ethics as well.
Thank you. Nick Maddox, same question to you. What is your opponent's biggest liability in this race?
Thank you. I think my opponent's biggest liability is his lack of experience as well as his misunderstanding of what it means to work together and collaboratively with all people in our community. I believe that some of his views can be very polarizing without hearing what else is going on in the community and how other people feel about it. What we need is a leader who's going to work to bring us together and understanding all sides and not one that's going to work to pull us apart.
Thank you. One more follow-up. Nick, we'll begin with you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, the county commission job is a full-time job with a salary of $83,945, as I'm sure you're aware. Tell us what your day job is currently and whether you will continue in that if elected or will you pursue full-time employment elsewhere?
Right now, I am a county commissioner and that's what I do full-time. And I look to continue to serve our community in the best way I can. But what I also believe though is that there's an opportunity there to be able to serve our community or work in another arena. And so, I may seek other employment as well, just so I can continue to build myself out as a full member of this community and contribute in both ways. And so, I do plan to continue to focus and be the best kind of commissioner I can be, but there may be a possibility that I could seek further employment as well.
Thank you. Same question to you, Josh Johnson.
Hello. I don't know why I said hello. I'm a public educator. I'm a public school teacher and a small business owner. That is what I do as a profession. I was just recently named Educator of the Year. I take those professions seriously. And at the role of the county commission, I will not leave my classroom. I will stay in my classroom and teach my students.
Thank you.
Very good, folks. Let's move on to something of some controversy here in the community, the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency and some of its activities. And we'll start with you, Mr. Johnson. 45 seconds for a response, please. Now that the dust has settled on that entire Bill Campbell Stadium improvement deal, what was your personal biggest takeaway from the experience? Or is there anything that you wish had been done differently in that regard?
Absolutely. You started that question by saying that the dust has settled and I think that it's very obvious that the dust settled on the heads and the shoulders of the taxpayers. When we took that $20 million investment, which was another $7 million, which was a bonding agent, which was an innate emission that we couldn't afford, the original $20 million, I think that people spoke loud and people spoke clear. And their local government and their local governance did not hear them and my opponent was at the helm of that decision-making process as the chair of the Blueprint Intergovernmental Board. And so, I think that we should have handled it differently. I really do. I think that $27 million is the most divisive issue in the last 10 years in local politics.
Appreciate that. Mr. Maddox, same question here. What's your takeaway? What could have been done differently, do you think?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. I was chairman of Blueprint during the conversation, but I was by no amount the only person on that board who supported it. What I would have liked to seen differently is just that our community have a more productive and consensus, a collegial conversation around it. The way that we, the way that some of the conversations that happened during that was just not indicative of the type of community that we are. I know we can get passionate about our issues, but what I would have liked to seen is us be able to come to the table, understanding that we're all trying to build the best Leon County we possibly can. And now that you said the dust has settled, the decision has been made, now I think we look as a community, how can we not just recoup or regain the ROI on that piece of money, but how do we also do it in partnership with FSU?
All right, sir. While we're with you here, just a 30-second follow-up and then same for you, Mr. Johnson. The Business of the Blueprint Intergovernmental Management Committee, which is made up of the city manager and the county administrator, isn't currently conducted in the sunshine and meeting minutes are not kept.
Yes.
Should this change?
You know, I think it's a perception issue there. When you think about the name of the committee, it says committee, but it's really a management structure. And during one of the Blueprint meetings, I made that exact statement that they don't meet. What they do is they manage the folks under them. And so, decisions are, documents are sent to sign and all that kind of stuff, just like you manage the staff under you, you don't actually meet with anybody to do that, you manage them. So, I think it's a perception issue there and I really wish that the conversation around it were really structured around the fact that they don't meet together to make decisions like that and they make those decisions in their separate offices.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Johnson, same question there about that structure.
Absolutely. Unequivocally, the IMC should be under sunshine. We are dealing with taxpayer dollars. They deserve to know every facet of the decision-making process that is going into it. It is inexcusable. When that question was brought up during that hearing, it was my opponent who adjourned that meeting at the mere questioning. I believe that it is inexcusable and I believe that the IMC must be under sunshine, the exact same way that the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency is, absolutely.
Okay, another 30-second follow-up for each of you and then we'll move on here. And starting with you, Mr. Johnson, are you comfortable with the level of ethics oversight of the Blueprint Board? And if not, what would you propose to replace what's there?
Absolutely. So, no, I'm not. I think that oversight has to be made more robust. Again, that has to occur because we are dealing with taxpayer dollars. When the taxpayers in 2014 voted to re-initiate the blueprint sales tax, I do not think that anybody making that decision would have thought that those funds would go into somewhere that was managed by a private committee that was outside of the sunshine with very low standards of oversight.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Maddox, same question.
Before I go there, I think what we have to do is be honest about where we are here. When that meeting happened, where the meeting was adjourned, there was a motion made from the floor that I, as chair, had to acknowledge and a vote was taken where the meeting was adjourned by vote, not by my gavel as chair. As far as governing, I believe that the way the structure is right now, I think it works. But if there's some more things that the citizens would like to see, I think we have to look at it. I'm absolutely open to looking at different ways of oversight that the citizens would like to see. But right now, the way it's set up, the board oversees the IMC and everybody else. So, I think where we are is a good place, but there could, there's some room for improvement if the community says so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Danielle?
Nick Maddox, we'll start with you on this one. Was Amazon a good deal for the city? And as they dial back expansion plans, how will you ensure that they stand by their part of the deal that earned them $2.5 million in incentives?
Amazon was absolutely a great deal for our city. When you look at what they're going to bring, when you talk about not just the jobs at $15 plus an hour here, but also the opportunity for people to better themselves and become more skilled in their labor, it's a slam dunk for all of us. But what we can't do is we can't allow them to backpedal on their promises to us as a community. And that's one of the things that I'm going to focus on, is making sure that the things that they said that they would deliver would be delivered. As well as, we got to get public transit out there. It's an absolute must that we make that happen. And so, there's still a lot of things to be worked out there, but what we need is we need leadership who's been proven and reliable to get things like that done, to problem-solve. And that's what I've done as a county commissioner. I look forward to continue to do it.
Thank you. Josh Johnson, same question to you.
Yes, I do think that the Amazon deal will create several opportunities that we need here in this community. However, I do think that there are components of it that are indicative of putting the cart before the horse. When we see that we are filtering jobs to a place for the people that need it the most, some of our most vulnerable with these pay increases, excuse me, with these pays at $15 an hour, and then realizing that public transit doesn't even run to that area, it speaks to poor planning, it speaks to not prioritizing people, and it speaks to prioritizing the projects. And if the projects aren't done with the people in mind, what good are the projects? So, yes, I think that it's a good project. I think that it will serve a lot of opportunity, but we have to do these things better.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to what I call our endorsement segment. What is your most prized endorsement, other than constituents, family, et cetera? Josh Johnson, 15 seconds, quick.
As the most endorsed candidate in this race, I cannot give you one, but I will tell you that we just left a press conference of all women, major women endorsements and leaders in this community that are standing behind me, from Dada Carterell to Debbie Lightsey to Jack Porter. And so, I am glad of all my endorsements and so I will not single one of them out.
Nick Maddox, 15 seconds, most prized endorsement?
All my endorsements are prized, in my opinion. I believe every single one of them are valuable, from the kid who you will never hear about to the most prominent member of our community. The one I'm most proud of at this point would be Congressman Al Lawson, who has been a champion for his community at many levels, time and time again.
Thank you. All right, Josh, the day after the election, you posted a powerful tribute to Rudy Ferguson as a local legend. A couple weeks after the man you hailed as a quote "giant" who's steps have shaken this community positively for decades, endorsed your opponent. Did you seek his endorsement and why do you think he chose your opponent?
I absolutely sought the endorsement of Pastor Ferguson. That's what I was doing the entire primary with these issues, not just his endorsement, but the endorsement of everybody. And so, yes, I do think that Pastor Ferguson is an extreme figure in this community. I do think that that endorsement seems a bit odd with the scandal that was at play. It seems to be a bit of backpedaling on some things. I don't want to get into it. I can't because that has been left so opaque and peripheral. Nobody knows what happened there with his resignation from a public service job. And so, I don't know. It does seem strange to me though, if I'm honest.
Nick Maddox, you have 15 seconds to respond to that, then I've got a specific question for you.
Thank you. I'm excited about the opportunity that I had to be endorsed and the endorsement of Pastor Rudy Ferguson, who is a champion in the Griffin Heights community and in our community as a whole. He represented himself extremely well in our primary.
Thank you. So, this question is directly for you, Nick Maddox. Recently, a mailer went out with a purported endorsement by Representative Allison Tant. She told the Democrats she wasn't making an endorsement and the mailer, quote, "were not approved." Your campaign called it a miscommunication and human error. Your opponent, however, calls it an enormous lie, fabricating a quote and claiming an endorsement you did not earn. Is that a fair assessment and how did this happen? 45 seconds.
Thank you. I don't think it's a fair assessment at all. What I believe is that what happened there was that there was a miscommunication between teams. Representative Tant is a great friend of mine and I respect her tremendously. She did tell me that she would work with me on a mailer. She just needed to be able to approve the quote before it went out. My campaign team, and I take full responsibility for this, did not send her nor myself the mailer that was going out before it went out. And that's where the ball was dropped and I take full responsibility for that. But to insinuate that she did not say she would work with me at all or to say that she was not willing to work on a mailer, that's not true. But I respect Representative Tant and I think of her as a great friend and I look forward to working with her in the future.
Josh Johnson, 15-second reply to that.
Yes, I didn't insinuate anything. The Tallahassee Democrat reported that Allison Tant did not authorize the picture, the mailer or the quote. I'm literally quoting my local news source and this is where things get shady. Anybody can obfuscate, but somebody has to tell the truth, eventually.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, we move on to the crime question that's already been alluded to here on this forum so far, starting with you, Mr. Johnson, and 45 seconds for a response. According to the running count on tallahassee.com, thank you, William, 15 people have died, at least 63 have been injured from a total of 89 shooting incidents so far this year. What's one thing you've pledged to do to stop that?
Absolutely. Over the past 12 years, Leon County has led the state in violent crime for five of them. And in 2019 or 2020, when we finally reached six, we applauded that as an achievement for just being outside of the top five. As a local high school teacher at a Title I school, I believe in these partnerships. I live the partnerships that put these young men to work. And I say young men because disproportionately, it's young African-American males who are affected by these things. I see them. I work with them every day. We have to engage our nonprofit sector, we have to engage our law enforcement community, and we have to engage community partners to holistically look at this. It is a crisis and the fact that it has been able to spool out of control for this long is ashamed to me.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maddox, your turn.
Thank you. I got to admit, all great ideas by Mr. Johnson, but the thing is, those things are already happening. What you've seen happen thus far is CSC, which is going to be tremendous when it comes to funding for organizations that are doing the work to assist with our children here in Leon County. And then also, the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, who we all agreed to, city, county and school board, to help, is going to actually push the ball forward as well. They got great programs coming out of there that they want to try. This is not something that we can allow to continue to grow. This is something that we got to nip in the bud and try to deal with, but it's not something that any one source can do. We're going to need some help from our community. We're going to need some help from the private sector with the jobs and the public sector at all as well. So, that's what I'm looking forward to continue to push for.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The county administrator serves at the pleasure of the county commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Vince Long has been serving as the county administrator since 2011. What grade would you give to Vince Long this year and why? What has he done well and what could he do better? Nick, 30 seconds.
I give Vince Long an A+. How can you not give a man an A+ that has been recognized internationally as one of the best at what he does? And this is not something that I'm saying. This is something a group of professionals, his peers have said about him. What Vince does so great is he's able to take our vision as a board and take that vision and implement it into the organization, being people-focused and performance-driven and give an output that pushes our community forward on every issue that we're trying to push forward on.
Thank you. Josh, 30 seconds. Vince Long, give him a grade and what has he done well and what could he do better?
I've answered this question before. I have never had the chance to work with Mr. Long, so I could not honestly and fairly answer that question. The issues that I am running on are the issues that I think affect this county and that is from local government. Now, local governance, which Mr. Long does have a hand in, he has a hand in, but I haven't worked with him. I can't fairly grade him. It would not be fair of me to do so.
Thank you.
All right, got a couple more direct questions for each candidate. Nick Maddox, we're going to start with you. Your opponent in a recent email blast has said your candidacy is mired in, quote, "personal and political scandals." It links to a Tallahassee Democrat story about your abrupt departure from the Boys and Girls Club amid a sexual harassment complaint. What do you want voters to know about that and how do you respond to your opponent's characterization of your exit? 45 seconds.
What I want the public to know about that is that the characterization of it is misrepresented. I left the Boys and Girls Club because I wanted to move on as a professional and focus on my campaign as well. Also, what I want the voters to know is that I absolutely have been focused on moving this campaign forward and moving this community forward as a county commissioner and been very effective in doing so through whatever issues I may have or any challenges that have come my way, whether it be the CSC, status on the Men and Boys or any other thing, Orange Avenue or any other thing I have pushed for as a county commissioner. What people can say is that Nick Maddox has led, Nick Maddox has been effective and I've been able to really build consensus that moves this community forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh, a question for you. Your candidacy has been cast as being part of a slate of progressive candidates led by Jeremy Matlow, who has endorsed you. In a column a few months back, Commissioner Maddox said he was, quote, "gravely concerned" by the tone, tactics and motivations of white liberal Democrats like Matlow. What's your response to that and what's an area where you disagree with Commissioner Matlow? 45 seconds.
I'm sorry. My response to that is when people are slated, there's usually slated contributions. I have raised $45,000 on the backs of everyday working-class members of this community, the community that I'm from, the community that my family's from for seven generations. The only person that seems to be slated is a person that has stacked donations from developers. I don't have those things. If I had some hand behind the wheel controlling me, I think that we would see it in my finances. My finances have come about honestly and that is more than I can say for some people. The second thing is, what is one thing that I agree with Commissioner Matlow on?
Disagree.
Oh.
Disagree.
Disagree with Commissioner Matlow on. I would have to see Commissioner Matlow's full record, but I'm absolutely sure there would be several things that I disagree with Commissioner Matlow on, but I do respect and appreciate his endorsement and I think that he is a civil servant that is doing a great job.
Nick Maddox, you have 15 seconds to respond to the honestly with fundraising.
Anybody and everybody in this community has an opportunity to give. I have taken money from developers, but I also have taken money from the community as well. There's a balance there and I don't think, in my opinion, and not even my opinion, I will not be swayed by anything that's given to me in the campaign. I will make decisions based off of what's best for our community.
Okay. So, we've been asking a lot of questions here. What's one question you'd like to ask your opponent? Nick Maddox?
And you got a minute to respond. So, it's me?
Yes, you get to ask the question to Josh and then we're going to go vice versa.
Okay. What is the, what is the issue that you look to come back the most over the next four years?
Absolutely. I think that public investments are a huge one because it consolidates so many things for me. Affordable housing, crime, poverty, the way that we use our local government resources. I think that all of these things are tied into public investments and how we use them. The environment, right, the deleterious effects that our environment's going through, through Lake Monson, through some developmental issues. I think that we have to steer our public investments in the right direction, Commissioner.
Thank you. Josh Johnson, now it's your turn. What question would you like to ask? Nick Maddox?
Commissioner, we have had a very cordial campaign. I would like to keep it that way, but this is the question that has percolated on my mind since I got into this race. Why do you vote consistently one way, whether it's Amazon, whether it's Blueprint? Why do you always seem to have the backs of the developers and not the backs of?
I don't believe that's true. What I attempt to do, Josh, is I attempt to look at what's going to be best for our community and how to move our community forward. The votes that I've taken, what I believe is creates a sense of growth in our economy and diversity in our economy, as well as it helps us move the needle on dealing with things like crime and things of that nature. I also believe that we look at some of the other things that I've done when it comes to Lake Monson, when it comes to looking at the vote for FAMU as well, when it comes to looking at how we deal with our MWBEs and going from SBE, I fought against that to go into, to stand with our MWBE. There have been some times that I have, over the last 12 years and thousands of votes, been against what you would call developer interest. And I will continue to look at ways that we can grow together, that we can grow together and build consensus and have both sides represented, that developer piece of it, which I don't believe all developers are villains. I think some of them want to work with our community and our environment, and the environmental piece of it that respects the character that we have in Leon County. Thank you for the question.
All right. Now, we're going to change up things a little bit and do our lightning round. Things are moving briskly. We're on time, so we're doing well there. These questions are one-sentence answers. Most of them are kind of a yes or no and then you've just got one sentence. You can give me a yes, because, all that. The first question, are there any limits on who you will accept campaign contributions from and if so, who? Josh Johnson?
Absolutely. I have not accepted any developer money and I also agree that all developers are not villains, but I do think that the will of the people should speak the loudest in local government.
Okay. Nick Maddox?
I have accepted donations far and wide. What I will continue to do is for those who align with what I believe in and what I'm working towards in our community, I will continue to accept donations from those folks. Those who don't support me, I would imagine would not.
Okay. Nick Maddox, Tallahassee Leon County has a high degree of food insecurity. What's one thing you can do as a commissioner to help on that front?
Innovate. Innovation, man. Looking at what we just did over at Sable Palm and what we're going to do in three more sites with the food lockers. We got to work with our partners. Second Harvest is one of them. And innovation is just going to create opportunities for folks to have a good meal at night and wake up in the morning fed.
Okay, Josh Johnson?
Per capita, I think we have one of the most robust nonprofit economies in the state. We have to engage the people that are doing the work every day, the boots on the ground. This type of work is being done. Local government has to partner with nonprofits and so that we can hear from the people that are experts in this field and engage them as partners.
All right, Josh Johnson, same with you. What is one additional public health care service that you'd like to see funded by Leon County Government?
An additional public health care service?
Right.
I think we could look at longer paternity leave, I mean, excuse me, a paternity leave, right? A family leave plan, as they call it in some places where both people get time off or childcare could be seen as a health care concern for people that work for the county.
Thank you. Thank you. Nick Maddox?
I have to go back and check, but I believe that we're doing, I think we took it up a few years ago, but I will check on that. And I don't, don't, don't fact quote me on it because I got to ask the county minister. I know you will. I know you will. Mental health. We got to do more. We're doing, we're doing something with mental health, but we got to do more. We're looking at our homeless situation and other things that we're looking at. Mental health is something that we got to figure out how to conquer here in Leon County. And we got to put more resources towards, towards it. We got to do it.
All right. In 2024, 25, our community will celebrate its bicentennial. What would you say is the most important message you would like to share about Tallahassee Leon County? Nick Maddox?
We're one Leon County. We're one city of Tallahassee. Polarization has to stop. We have to figure out how to come together as a community and conquer our problems, have productive conversations that, that, that don't focus on our differences, but focus on what we want to do together and how we can mend our differences or weave our differences together to create solutions for our community.
Thank you.
But we're one city, one county.
Thank you. Josh Johnson, same question?
Absolutely. And I'll take the affirmative that while we are one county, there are people that have very different experiences in this county, and we can bring all of those experiences to a priority. We have the poorest zip code in the state of Florida. This is an embarrassment for what I think is the greatest county on the planet. We have to do things to stop just saying that we're one and start being one.
Thank you. As a county commissioner, you'll be working with your counterparts in the city commission. Toward that end, who would you endorse for mayor of Tallahassee and why? Josh Johnson?
Again, I'm not going to answer that question. I have my own race to run. I do appreciate the question. As a voter, I will cast my vote, but I am not prepared to do that. I have to finish my race.
Will you tell us who you're voting for in that race?
I have to finish my race.
Nick Maddox?
What he said.
All right. I have to try. Given President Biden's recent pardons, should the county play a role in supporting the decriminalization and or legalization of marijuana? And I'm going to give you a little extra time on this. This is obviously a question that has preoccupied the commission over time. I think I can think of at least maybe two or three other times that this has come up. So what's your answer on that? Nick Maddox?
It's on me? So we've had a conversation with the sheriff as well as the state attorney, and what they have said is that they will enforce what's on the constitution and the laws that, at the federal and the state level. What they also brought to light was that, hey, right now, we don't have anyone in our, in our Leon County jail for 20, 20 grams or less. Commissioner Proctor and I and a couple more commissioners had a very candid conversation about that with our sheriff and our, and our state attorney. What they have promised us is that if it becomes an issue where we have more and more folks in our Leon County jail with those kind of charges, that they will bring it back for some consideration. Do I believe that we should be considering it more often? Yes, absolutely. But right now, they do have, our sheriff and our state attorney do have the discretion for civil citation. But the federal and the state level has preempted us from, from being able to really have them enforced so they get to make the choice. So, so lastly, I'll say, do I agree that decriminal, not when we call it decriminalization? Do I believe there needs to be some sense of discretion there and a look at not criminalizing that level of 20 grams or less? Absolutely, I do. I think you can save someone's, save someone's career, you can save someone's life, you can save their, their, their future by simply giving them a civil citation. And right now, our sheriff's office and our state attorney does have the discretion to do so and are doing so. Thank you.
Josh Johnson, same question?
Let me give a clear and concise answer to that question. We should absolutely look at decriminalizing certain amounts of marijuana. Under 20 grams should be decriminalized. I just got a letter, an email, excuse me, about four weeks ago because one of my students, who is a bright and shining star, and he absolutely did make a mistake. But that 22 grams could ruin his life, and it's a life that we can't afford. No life is a life that we can afford to have ruined, but especially over these types of things, absolutely and unequivocally.
So how, though, do you overcome the, you know, state attorney objection of enforcing the laws and the books? What can the county commission do?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the county commission can give its own set of ordinances for police officers to use that discretion, right? I know it was said that they use the discretion, but I think that the discretion should be what's enforced in this issue. And the discretion under 20 grams, it should really be pushed that we're going to civil cite these people.
All right. Back to a little bit more of the lightning end of things. Josh Johnson, what's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected? One sentence?
That everything I've said on the campaign trail is something that I am going to try to do with all of the other county commissioners, and it will not take me 12 years to do it.
Is there any one single pledge that you would commit to?
That wasn't a single pledge. I'll give you, I can give you another one.
So, okay. So you're saying everything you've talked about, you will accomplish?
No, that I will try to accomplish with everybody else on the commission, and it will not take me 12 years to do it.
Okay. Very good. Nick Maddox?
That we, we will move the needle when it comes to affordable housing, when it comes to crime, and when it comes to mental health here in Leon County.
Okay. Nick Maddox, name one specific community in Tallahassee that needs immediate attention and what you would do to address that.
32304 needs immediate, immediate attention. Commissioner Proctor has led the charge on multiple workshops and community events to talk about how we can, how we can assist with moving the ball forward on that. I, I commit to continuing to focus on that effort and making sure that our economic development efforts and our infrastructure efforts show that we care and we're going to do something and continue to do something about 32304.
Okay. Josh Johnson, same question?
Thank you. I look forward to working with Commissioner Proctor on these projects. But I do think we need new leadership to guide them in. 32304 is under desperate concern, and it has been for a very long time. And it's one thing to now say that it needs immediate concern. It has needed immediate concern, and now we need immediately new leadership to usher that new concern in.
Last question. Is there something on the abortion front that the county commission should be doing? Or is this a state and federal issue? Josh Johnson?
As the person who is endorsed by the Florida Organization of Women, the National Organization of Women, so many women partners, I have usually deferred the narrative of that to women. However, this question is a question that pricks my heart because we do need leadership that allows our voters and our citizenry and our residents to know that we are on their side. And so in terms of policy, no, I don't think that there's anything specifically that we can do, but we can be leaders on this issue. Every rally that is held, I've been there. I've never seen my opponent. I have tried to let people know that I am on their side because the state of Florida is under attack as the nation is writ large. And it's leadership in this part of the state. We have to, we have to stake our claims on these issues.
Nick Maddox, same question. Is there something specific the county should be doing on the abortion front?
Actually, Josh, that sounds great. I think that what we, what we can do is, is we cannot necessarily affect policy-wise because we have been preempted by the state and federal government. What we can do is we can build out our healthcare system to make sure that those, those women who are in situations of pregnancy are well taken care of and have all of the health provisions they need to, to, to make whatever decisions they need to make, whether it be here or someone else or somewhere else. They have to be made to know that they're safe here and that we're fighting for them and that we're creating an environment of safety when it comes to their health.
All right. Thank you. I've talked way too much.
My turn. Gentlemen, a question that revolves around a word that we have all referenced at one point, at least in this discussion, is development. And so let's talk a little bit about that. And we'll start off with a 45 second response on that, starting with you, Mr. Maddox. What is one development that's been doing it right as far as you're concerned? And what's one development that maybe is problematic and will leave that whole doke thing out of the equation?
Thank you. What I'm, what I'm really excited about is Orange Avenue Apartments. When you look at where's, where's place in our community and what's coming to it, what was there was some outdated housing and public housing. But what's going to, what's going to come there is a mixed income, mixed use development that's going to change the trajectory of the community that it's in. What I'm looking for is to make sure that gentrification does not come with it. So we got to protect that neighborhood, but also be excited about the growth in, in the, in the way, in the way we're going to conquer affordable housing when it comes to that development. What I think we also have to do is we have to be, we have to be very cognizant and very conscious of how we are addressing our affordable housing problem. It's not just an issue of us being able to redevelop within the urban services area. I think we have to look at, at strategic ways that we can look outside and maybe extend the boundary a little bit, as well as developing more housing that can be cheaper, a cheaper stock than redeveloping in town.
Okay. Can you key in on one development, though, that is kind of, uh-uh, this is not going well?
I tell you, I won't say, I don't think there's, I won't say there's a development that's not going well. What I will say is we have to keep an eye on those places where we have strategically extended the urban service area to make sure, to make sure that the development that's going there is one that's, that's, that keeps the character of our community and celebrates who we are as a community and does not, does not change who we are as a community.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Johnson, a development that's doing pretty good, one not so good?
Coming on the heels of an answer where I said that my opponent has voted for development over people time and time again. He could not give an answer to one development that has been deleterious to the fabric of this city. When we look at Northeast Gateway Projects in Wallonie, we've been talking about sewer to, I meant septic to sewer, right? Wallonie jumped the line in that nobody even lives there yet. An $80 million investment. People on the south side of town have been waiting and paying taxes for years and years and years. And my opponent cannot think of any development that has been deleterious to the fabric of this city while being, or county, while being at the helm of leadership in this county. I think that that speaks louder than anything that I could say. Thank you.
Okay. But conversely, sir, can you identify one development that you think has done pretty good?
Yeah. I think that I'll take a subdivision. When I look at Blairstone Forest, how it was built and carved throughout the trees, maintaining the integrity of our precious tree canopy and still giving a very good and livable neighborhood. I think that it can be done. It's been proven that it can be done, but it just takes into account who we prioritize while we're doing it.
Okay. And Mr. Johnson, as a follow-up here, if you could, for 30 seconds, if you could change one thing in our land development code, what would that be and why?
You know, I don't like, I call it, I've been calling it over this campaign, the Trojan horse effect. I don't like that developers can buy residential and then rezone it commercial. I think that those zoning ordinances have to be more stringent and more tight. If that's the case, then anybody can buy anything and then rezone it, petition to rezone it. And I just have always seen that spool out negatively.
Thank you. Mr. Maddox, your thoughts on that, sir?
Well, how many, how long do I have?
This is, let's go for 30 seconds on this one. Do I change one thing? What's your, your top of mind?
I think, I think we need to look at how we're looking at our, our communities like Fort Braden, Fort Braden, as well as Bradfordville, as well as Woodville, communities like that. They have their own character. And what we need to allow is for those communities to build within their community to celebrate that character. So looking at how do we implement maybe a town or village type concept that can go to those areas? So they can, they can better have ownership over what it looks like in those areas as they continue to grow.
Okay. And a follow-up for you, sir, and then, and then for Mr. Johnson. We'll do 45 seconds on this one. You talk about affordable housing. How do you incentivize that, particularly in a community that really we have not cracked the top 20 as far as poverty in the state is concerned?
Inclusionary housing has been something that we're really focusing on, moving the ball forward in Leon County over the past couple of years. I think we also have to look at how much is it costing for our, for our affordable housing development communities to come online? How do we make it a, a, a affordable? Because that, that cost is pushed on to the homeowner. So how, if, if we can get people to commit to doing affordable housing, how do we make it a, a business where they're able to build something that's good for our community, but keep the prices low? Because in the, in the beginning of it, we're able to move their, move their, their applications through the process and make sure we're not putting so much cost that in the end, they have to raise the cost past affordable for our community.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, again, how do you motivate developers to, hey, let's get some affordable housing out there in the pipeline?
Thank you. Yeah, that's not how any of that works. Local government has a responsibility. Private developers are private developers, and we've just said that we can't say that all those people are bad. And they also have license to the free market. But what we can do on our end is things like expanding down payment assistance, crawling out of a pandemic when people are so vulnerable. If we can use $27 million to cater to one thing, maybe we can look at catering to other things like down payment assistance, looking at a public affordable housing trust that we can all pay into, using funds and resources at the local government level. This is what I'm always talking about when I say local governance and local government. Local government is the apparatus. Local governance is the decision-making. The decisions have been deleterious.
Everybody.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
A lot of those things we're already doing. We're not, sir.
Yes, we are. When it comes to land trust and things of that nature, we already have, down payment assistance, we have as well. I'm on the Affordable Housing Committee, and we just had a workshop where they talked about one of the biggest tools that we have and that we're supposed to be doing is if someone comes to the table and they're going to do an affordable housing project, we prioritize and move that through the system because they're, they are, they are dealing with affordable housing. So there is a fast track for that, and we need to make sure that we're doing that. And we also look at, oh, the cost and things of that nature. So time and cost, when it comes to those who are prioritizing affordable housing, this is something that I've gotten from the Affordable Housing Committee training statewide.
Okay. And find, I found a word, Mr. Johnson, on that one.
Absolutely. Workshops lie, forums lie, numbers don't. The numbers are, we have an affordable housing crisis. We have workshopped ourself to death on this issue. We have got to start acting. That is my promise to the people of Leon County.
Thank you.
Workshops in action.
Okay.
Yes. Homelessness, shifting gears here. Homelessness has been a more visible problem in Leon County. Where are we missing the mark on attacking this complex issue? Josh Johnson, we're going to start with you, 45 seconds.
Absolutely. Investments. If homelessness is the problem that we see it is and that we think it is, we have to invest in it that way. One of the things that we have to start investing in is mental health and the things that orbit mental health and the things that orbit poverty. Homelessness is a direct result, usually there's a direct correlation between a mental health concern or a person who was just living paycheck to paycheck and couldn't catch that last paycheck. Both of those things are something that local government has a real responsibility to talk to and not just talk about, to do something about. And so we have to look at how we invest in our small businesses, which employ so many of our citizens here, and we have to look at mental health concerns.
Nick Maddox?
Two things. One, working with our partners who do this work day in and day out, like the Carney Center. And, and also, I mean, Mr. Johnson spoke, spoke about it when it comes to creating opportunities for those who are looking, looking to better themselves. But what, what I'm hearing from the Carney Center is that a large part of our homeless problem has to do with mental health. How do we deal with the mental health issues, whether it be medicine or whether it be counseling or whatever the needs are there in our community with our homeless population? How do we deal with that piece of it? Those who, who, who want to better themselves, whoever, I've had some reach out to me that have said, hey, Commissioner, I really would like to put myself in a better situation, and can you point me to this program, that program? And I've been able to do that, pointing to programs that, that have helped them build themselves out of a homeless situation. But the mental health people or folks that are out there with the mental health problems, they're the piece of the puzzle that we really need to focus on when it comes to homelessness.
Thank you. Nick Maddox, should Leon County diversify our transportation options in our community? And if so, how? 30 seconds.
Absolutely. Leon County, especially when it comes, we need, we need a more robust transit system. And working with our partners, the CEO of Tallahassee, who runs our transit, transit system, I believe we can make that happen. Now, inside the city limits, I think they do a pretty good job. Outside in the county, because it is a city, city, city service, it's not as robust. But when you look at what's going on at the Amazon Fulfillment Center and the fact that we need a route out there, that's something that we can talk back and forth with the, with the city on. But as gas prices go up, we got to look at how we're getting, how we're moving people around town.
Thank you. Josh Johnson, same question to you.
Absolutely. For two major reasons. One is for the environment. And even though we're not close to the coast, we are going to start seeing effects of climate change. We, excuse me, we already are seeing effects of climate change, and we know that diverse transportation options are good for the environment. Moreover than that, if we can expand the urban services area to accommodate a few people with everybody's tax money, maybe we can expand our local transit system to help. with everybody's tax money, maybe we can expand our local transit system to help everybody. But we've got to know what our priorities are.
Josh Johnson, thank you for opening the door to this question. You'll get this one 30 second response. What's one way we can make our community's infrastructure better prepared for and responsive to climate related events?
Absolutely. Um, so we are fortunate here that we have such a precious canopy in our live oaks, right? Um, we have got to start development that builds up. The sprawl that we have been seeing with these expansions, these piecemeal, uh, expansions is just not healthy. Our own COP plan gives us a formula for how to grow. And we're not even following our own COP plan with these piecemeal projects. We have to grow up. It incentivizes a healthier development and healthier environment.
Thank you. Nick Maddox.
Question one more time, please?
Let me repeat the question. What's one way we could make our community's infrastructure better prepared for and responsive to climate related events?
I'll tell you what, continuing, infrastructure wise, continuing to work on our multimodal, uh, uh, structure of, 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 of transportation around town that, that we focus on at CRTPA. Uh, that transit piece of it is very important as well. Um, you know, making sure that, as you, as you talked about, when we look at, um, extended urban services area fulfillment center and things like that, thinking about how we're going to get people back into town that don't, that, that need to get into town for work and things of that nature, whether it be through bus or whatever, we have to do there is having that conversation around that. We have to protect our environment and the character that we have in this community that makes it, makes it the beautiful community that it is.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, y'all made it. We're going to, uh, do closing arguments. And because y'all were so brisk, we're going to be able to, uh, give you 90 seconds if you want it. You can share website, uh, any other information. This is your chance to speak directly to voters. Uh, Josh Johnson, we're gonna start with you.
Absolutely. Um, as a local educator, uh, as a person who was born in this county, as a person who comes from a seven generation, uh, family in this county, I believe in this place. I think that my candidacy has borne the fruit of that belief. Um, I believe that we have been right on all of the issues, from affordable housing to crime, uh, to large government giveaways, and we have done it all with you. Individual contributions from people, endorsements from people, authorized endorsements from people. Organizations have stood behind this campaign, institutional endorsements. Um, I believe that if you give me a chance, I and we can move Leon County forward. Um, thank you for having me. Um, I hope that you take a look at the differences, uh, between the campaigns and the candidates. And I hope that you come to a decision November 8th that will help us move this county forward. Thank you so much.
Nick Maddox, you get the last word?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thank you for, for having us formed. This is absolutely amazing. Josh, you've done a great job, and I appreciate, uh, you being here with us and, and us being able to have this, this conversation again. Uh, I start with Together We Can because I believe that we absolutely can together. What, what's not included in the we is a sense of individuality that does not consider each other. What we have to do and what I commit to doing and what I've done as a commissioner all along is building consensus amongst a community that's going to conquer our biggest problem when it comes to affordable housing. I have been there during the job conquering that problem. When it comes to crime, I've been there leading. I was, uh, uh, on that, on that issue, pushing, trying to get us to the right place in a, with a, with, with everybody's, um, opinion involved, pushing us, us up the hill, uh, of, of conquering crime. When it comes to economic development, when it comes to looking at diversifying our economy, working with our partners, nothing, absolutely nothing that we do in this county can be done alone. What I'm asking is the, asking is that you give me the opportunity to continue to do what I've been doing and working as your county commissioner to build consensus and conquer problems, our hu, our biggest problems here in Leon County, November the 8th. Remember that together we absolutely can. And Nick Maddox is the leader that can pull us together and continue to work on these issues that we have in Leon County and conquer each and every one of them. It won't happen overnight, but what I can say is that we will do it.
Thank you to the candidates, the Tallahassee Democrat, the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, WFSU Public Media, and all of our viewers for joining us on this program. You can find a replay of the forum and all of the others in this series on our YouTube pages, plus Tallahassee.com and WFSU.org. The recorded broadcast, the audio portion of it, will be on Tuesday, October 11th. Then that will air at 11 o'clock on WFSU 88.9 FM.
Our next forum will be for the Leon County Commission District 2 race, and it will be later today, Monday, at 1 o'clock. It is between Christian Caban and Hannah Crow.
And stay tuned to Tallahassee.com, uh, for coverage of this, uh, forum, uh, and all the latest election news. Uh, you can also look for our special general election section of the, uh, Tallahassee Democrat, which will be inserted in Sunday papers. Uh, that will include interviews with all the candidates on the ballot and be inserted on the October 23rd, uh, paper. I would also ask all those viewing today to send us your questions. We use them. You can email them to news@tallahassee.com. We take all kinds of questions. Uh, thank you all so much for attending. Have a great day.
Thank you.